Right. Um, I'm just gonna do the open meetings act again. The City of Brand abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act in conducting business. The copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is on display in this meeting room as required by the Nebraska state law. The City of Brand is recording these proceedings. We are at new business. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We were at public comment. All right. Any public comments? No public comments. We'll move to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. New business. Presentation and discussion on the Service Schedule M, SSM Agreement Modernization between the City of Brand and Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska or MEAN.
That's a mouthful. Yeah.
And you'd like to introduce yourself and we can.
So, so I've invited Carol Brannan and, and she's brought along Nicole Kubik, right? Carol thinks she would like to retire.
Oh, I know. I'm sure.
Because I believe you mentioned the last time we had an update.
We are, we are, we are losing a valuable asset within MEAN and NPP in general. Um, this is something that, uh, that I think I've talked with Lisa about, uh, you know, sent, sent some stuff over to Tana as well. So I thought we, we should get a thirty thousand foot overview before we have to uh, vote on, on, on the modernization of our service schedule and contract or our total power participant agreement. Uh, and Carol very much so is obliged. Uh, I'm sure this is one of a bazillion communities you will be giving the same spiel to. Uh, and as well, I'll be sharing a, they did a wonderful job. It's about a seventeen minute video. Um, I'll share that guys, that link with you guys as well on this meeting. Um, that, that also goes into Nicole's app. Carol, thank you. And Nicole, thanks for coming.
So Nicole's my replacement. So I'm dragging her along.
Well, good.
So she knows. I need to.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for letting me come in. Um, as Edward said, uh, we're kind of going through a process right now. Um, I, I recognize Nick Anderson. You were on there the last time I was here, so. Um, since twenty twenty, um, that we, MEAN has set up in twenty twenty, it's set up an ad hoc committee to, um, to, um, work on modernizing its long-term service schedule M contracts. The ad hoc committee is made up of the MEAN Board of Directors with, um, staff and providers. Um, right now, MEAN is moving forward with this initiative and, um, we thought it would be better if I came out and it is a complex, you know, electricity is a complex industry and help you understand kind of what we're doing here. Um, Tana was in on, um, some meetings that we, we hopefully helped her understand where we were going with this process. Um, recently, so, um, I just wanted to go over this to kind of, um, let you know what the impact is on Brand and to answer any questions or address any concerns that you might have at this point. Um, Grant signed, uh, first Grant joined NPP Energy in nineteen seventy-eight, so forty-five years ago, um, you guys became part of the pool. And then in nineteen ninety, um, Grant signed its, um, first contract with MEAN. And then finally, in two thousand eight, it signed its, its, um, service schedule M. So for fifteen years, um, you've been, um, part of the, part of the M contract. The, um, I, I'm gonna, I want to talk about sort of the history of the MEAN's formation because that's going to kind of give the foundation of why we're doing this. Um, in nineteen eighty-one, um, there was some legislative action that was taken that set up the Municipal Cooperative Financing Act and it passed in Nebraska. Because MEAN, because thirteen members of thirteen communities then were a member of pool decided that they wanted to, to, um, uh, go through bond financing as a group, not each individual community. So MEAN was created through the Municipal Cooperative Financing Act, which makes MEAN similar to municipality. So when we were created, we were never created to have an end date. And when we created our, um, our first long-term contract, the service schedule M, there was no end date. And so, um, forty years later, a lot of things have changed in the industry. A lot of things have changed, um, in, in, in rooms like this. A lot of people are asking questions. Why is this? Why would we ever sign a contract with no end date? Um, can we look at this? And so we put together an ad hoc committee to kind of go through that process and see how we can, how we can give people that opportunity but not harm anybody in the process. Um, the benefits of, um, modernizing that M. So as I mentioned, the ad hoc committee consists of the members of the board directors. Um, the intent again is to include, um, current industry language, um, a lot of the regulations and tariffs that did not exist back in, you know, forty years ago, back in the eighties. And, uh, neither did the markets. So we have to address some of that language as well. Um, not only does the, uh, the modernization provide certainty and clearer, more clarity to the contract um, with regard to retention of MEAN's members, but also the growth of MEAN as well. Because recently, um, we had a member that was a short-term member and they were looking, the community wanted to go long-term. But they were afraid of the, the long, the end dates, the, the lack of end dates. And so they stayed with short-term. So this kind of helps us grow and bring on new communities who have been identified in MEAN. Um, the new M will eliminate, um, concerns regarding the exhibit D. Um, I don't know. How many have it had one? Okay. Um, so the exhibit D is, um, is an exhibit that, um, says attached to the contract. Um, by law, by state statutes, MEAN has to provide to its members a list of their, of the contract resources that we have there longer than fifteen years. In the power industry, that's a very short amount of time. So it's, there are a lot of, of resources on that list. However, we add a new one, we have to send it out. And, um, silence is golden. I mean, silence is acceptance. Silence is golden too. Um, silence is accepted. So if you don't tell us you don't want to participate in a project and it just goes on, it catches the back of your contract, because he's got probably every one of them, um, up until now. There's a new one that is, I bring this up now because, um, before the new M gets out and into your hands, a, a new service, uh, or a new exhibit D is coming out. If you choose, um, to not participate, so it would be a solar resource, which means that some of your power is going to be coming from the solar group lead. And should you choose not to participate in that project, you have to notify us. And, and then you, what happens is you, your power, we will still supply you with your power up to this point. So you say, we're not, we're not going to participate. Once your growth goes beyond that, then you now will become a contract purchaser and you will be out on the market getting that piece that's above the load that you stopped at. That make sense?
So subdivision, um, fifty units, whatever we ultimately go in there, that's growth. Um, so if we chose not to move forward with the modernization, then that portion of anything above where our current load is at that time would be bought at the market price, which we all know is sometimes great.
Mostly not.
Hardly ever. Nine times out of ten, it's, it's, it's extremely high.
So, um, that'll be coming out, um, most communities, I don't build it. I honestly don't know that anyone runs it through council. I think it just gets added to the back of the contract. But I need to understand what that would be coming out. That's why, um, the new M, that exhibit D goes away. There's just language that's inserted in there that automatically, it's just. Um, the other big thing that the new M, uh, provides is a fine life term. And we'll talk a little bit more about that here shortly. Um, but, so on the next page, when you look at what is changing and what is not changing. So what is changing again are all of the modernized terms we're going to talk about. I mean, we'll add in, um, the RTOs and, you know, the, the regulations and the tariffs that didn't suspect them. Uh, we're going to eliminate some of the things as you might remember, um, the management committee, the MEAN management committee. MEAN used to have two governing bodies. We had a board of directors and a management committee. Um, and the markets changed and we grew out of it. We, um, eliminated the management committee. But there are a lot of references in the current M to the management committee and the, um, you know, policies and procedures called the IRPA, which refer to generation. And so it's just to clean up some of those things as well. Um, we are going to add, um, things like, um, points of delivery. Um, we're going to take out on the back of the contract, there's a one-line diagram which shows, it's a physical diagram that shows how your power is getting, what are your powers coming in, where, what stuff is going and normalizing everything. Now they're saying that we need to have those in words instead of in a drawing. And so that will change as well. Um, we'll talk about, you know, the transition of the market. Uh, we'll talk about, you know, purpa, Indian, all the environmental attributes that didn't exist way back then. Um, and it's solar services. Um, the, um, we will note that it, the communities who have a WAPA allocation will maintain that, um, WAPA allocation, that, that will not change. Um, not the amounts, not where your, where it's coming in, not that it gets touched. It will be in, in the new, in the new contract. Um, and then they will all, and they will also address, um, WAPA. So that there are issues that say, yeah, whatever was, whatever WAPA is, it's different than what we're doing. And so that's just going to address that in there too. We'll talk about the, um, the IRP, which is the Integrated Resource Plan. So, um, MEAN, MEAN does that for its service schedule and participants. Um, we do that nearly, or every five years, excuse me, for you. As a whole group, we do, those are, it gets filed with WAPA. It tells WAPA um, what our plan is, where we're getting our power, what is our plan for new power. Um, are we going to, how much renewable do we have? How much renewable do we plan to have? How do we plan to get there? So basically, it's our, it's our, it's our plan for the future. And we automatically do that for our long-term participants. Um, also one of the, um, the benefits, um, of the long-term, um, arrangements is just basically the economical wholesale pricing of its resources. The longer. The longer you have, um, power, the, um, the cheaper it is. So, um, in the broader pool of, of power parties as well, that helps, that helps that. What is not changing is, um, are the parties that are involved. It's still going to be between the City of Brand and MEAN and in some pieces of WAPA as well. None of that is changing. Um, your load, your, that your contracted load from us isn't changing. We're not going to drop it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna change that in, in any way at all, along with the price. That's going to be what it is right now. None of that's going to change. Um, that actually, the price is set every year by the board. Um, it was effective on April one, so that's not going to change. And so, um, the board reviews it and, um, makes any recommendations next January. That will be effective on, on April one. And the services, the services that you now get will not change. Um, it is likely that they will be enhanced as, um, as, uh, MEAN goes through this modernization with this contract. Um, uh, the pool, NPP, is also going through a transition where it might be, there might be a lot of services moving out of pool and into, uh, the MEAN arena. Because most of the partakers of those services are MEAN participants. So it just feels like a more natural way to go. Um, we don't know what that'll look like yet. And Edward said, we'll be meeting next week to see, um, how many of those services will go over. So, um, the timeline for all of this, um, we've been working, like I said, since twenty twenty. Uh, we've completed, um, the attorney sessions that we had. Um, so, so, um, Tana was online, got to listen to, um, the red line of the contract. Uh, we went through that with the, uh, city attorneys, village attorneys and town attorneys. And, um, hopefully, um, got any, anything addressed that you had. Do you have any questions about any of that? Okay. All right. All right. But, um, so following now, we're finished with the attorney sessions. And, um, staff, it's staff's plan to bring up final draft after the attorney sessions to the MEAN board in, um, mid-November. And then we plan to have, if it passes the board, then we plan to send it out to the, um, service schedule. So out here for your approval, we would ask that you would have, um, approval by March. We would like to have it before the fiscal year. Um, the one thing to note that if this, um, the, the big thing that is, um, is, is changing, I didn't, gosh, I slipped right over that. Um, is that we're offering up the opportunity to get out of the long-term contract if, if you choose to do so. Um, the first option or the first time that window is open is twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. We have to help, we have to coincide it with the, the bonds, the ending of the bonds. And so, um, there will be a five-year window where you can give notice to get out in twenty years, so the twenty-five-year notice. And the reason why we are, um, giving, we're asking for a twenty-five-year notice is because when you are a long-term participant, we are out and we have purchased power to serve your load for that amount of time. And so in order not to harm those people who are staying in, in the club, so to speak, then you have to give a notice so we can begin to drop off those resources. So that's the biggest, that really is the biggest change, is that opportunity to get out of MEAN if you want to. Every five years, there will be, that window will be open again. So if you miss one or council changes or whatever, then you've got the opportunity again. So every five years, that window will be open to get notice. You do not have to sign the new M. If you choose not to sign the new M, um, your current contract goes on as is. You will continue to get the exhibit D. Um, nothing changes. It's just a modernization, plus it gives, um, future councils the opportunity to make a change if they feel they need to. And that's really the big, the big point. Okay?
Wow. Carol, Carol encapsulating, two going on three years worth of work, uh, in, in about, uh, ten, fifteen minutes there. Um, part of, part of what she's talking about that I, that I want to elaborate on is, is I've, I've been blessed to grow in my role, um, with NPP and, and MEAN, um, by my peers. Uh, I serve as a chair for the services committee. Uh, we, we have a lot of work ahead of us in the, in that committee. Pool or NPP has, has a lot of resources. Um, so you think about Gerald Gentleman Station, uh, down in Sutherland, uh, Yjin, um, there's, there's, the map runs four states, um, with, with multiple producers. So your, your coal plants, your nuclear, hydro, solar, wind, landfill gas. Um, and all of these, we have a power purchase agreement. So that's where the bonding comes in. That's what creates the long-term. We're out past twenty fifty now, I believe. Um, as far as the bonds go. So that, that creates, so what, when we sign that power, that, that, as their service schedule M, we said, you know, we're, we're in it for the long haul. Go ahead and purchase power for us out that far, or continue to purchase power for us out that far. The good thing is we have, it's similar to an insurance pool. We have a large pool to draw from. So we have a lot of members who, who are service schedule M members, which helps keep our costs down as a whole, uh, year to year. And also as a member of the finance committee, we do the best that we can to, to scrutinize staff and say, hey, we don't want a rate increase. Or if we, we have to take one, we're going to take one incrementally and it's going to be small over time. Jamie Johnson is the, is the head there, has done a fantastic job at fielding all of our absurd requests. And let's move this money here so we, so we don't have to, you know, the, the rate, or the rate stabilization fund and all the jars.
Jars.
Um, there, there's a reason that, you know, I go to Lincoln on, on a near every other month basis. And, and it's so that I can voice our community's concerns um, as one of the smaller participants, um, small but mighty, um, as, as far as a load goes. Um, so that we continue to get the best, uh, most efficient, cost-efficient electricity that we can uh, from all of these, these producers that we, that we have to pull from. Uh, thi- this is not something that was fly-by-night. It was, it was not, it was not an easy decision. In fact, we were still having tough decisions at the last board meeting um, about what to do about the NPP modernization and, and what does that look like going forward. Uh, so there's, and part of that was brought on by legislation through L B two eighty-three. It goes to, it names for it. It's two eighty, it's two eighty-three. That allows MEAN to do more things, more, it broadens their capabilities, uh, to take on additional services away from NPP. Uh, whi- which opens the door, uh, in quite a few ways for, for MEAN to continue to grow.
Because MEAN is a, MEAN was set up as a wholesale power supplier. So we are, we were not able to do anything beyond that. So like anything gas or water or, or AMI or cybersecurity, anything like that. So we had to go through this legislation to be able to provide those services to our members. And that just passed this last year, this year.
This year.
This year.
They didn't get much though, but they got that. So it's, this is, this is a, in, in my opinion and my side with the board, and this is a, this is a much-needed modernization, if nothing for the language updates and providing members with some sort of a security that if the time comes down the road, that they really truly, you know, a council or village board, if they really truly are, are done with MEAN and want to be out, they have a way out.
So is there no termination clause right now?
No, there's none.
Okay. So then a finite term is offered every five years and it's a termination of twenty-five years?
Correct.
And then, um, on exhibit D, you said you could, we use remove solar as, as an example. Um, can we choose our power allocation? Can we say like, we want like this much from?
Oh, yeah.
Like we want, okay, like we want, so if we wanted more power, when we say we want more solar, we wanted more nuclear, we can adjust it. Basically, we can change our power allocation whenever everything is.
Yes.
Okay.
You, every year we send out, um, the renewable energy survey. Um, that comes to Edward. And, um, you, in there, you tell us how, say, for instance, you want ten percent of your energy to come from where or twenty cent, twenty percent from solar by twenty thirty, or however you want to, however you want to increase that. You can do that at that time. It doesn't mean that we'll, we'll go, that it's available. I mean, we would have to go out, depending on what it is, how much it is and how many other members are interested in it. I mean, we can't go out and, and buy fifty years' worth of something and have only Grant, um, supply because somebody else is paying for that, you know, that's being subsidized. And so we have to, to then gather enough interest from everyone else on some of those things, on some of the things like solar, I mean, like, um, hydro, um, we, or winds or landfill gas. We do have, um, some of that in the renewable, the green program that you can take a little bit more of that. Those things, because they're renewable, are at a premium. They're, they're more expensive because they're renewable. That's just the way it is. Um, so depending on how much you want and when you want it and what you want, then there, um, you would be buying that much less from MEAN but you would be buying it at a higher price than MEAN's rate. But it can be done.
Right.
It just needs, we just need to know, um, what it is and the timeframe. You know, if you're thinking like, you know, by twenty thirty, we want to be fifty percent, whatever, you know, that's a time thing. And that, there's a, there's a plan that has to happen.
Sure. So we want to change our allocation. Do we have to sign a new contract or we need an existing contract? Okay.
And that was, I think, the last time Carol was out here was what? What she presented on was our, our makeup, our, our resource mix.
Yeah.
Uh, so, yeah. But we'll, we'll be getting that shortly.
Um, I don't know. Yeah, I think those usually come out in spring someone.
Right. Well, I mean, the next one will be coming, the next one will be coming out towards the beginning of the fiscal year.
Yes, that's correct.
And their fiscal year runs April to?
March to April.
March to April.
Or April to March.
Right, right.
Yeah.
April one to March thirty. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Everybody has to have a different fiscal year. It's just.
Why not? So when, when Edward's talking about our resources, MEAN owns pizzas of power plants in, um, in Wyoming, in Iowa, in Nebraska. We have power purchase contracts, um, from all over. We have a WAPA allocation just like you do. So we've got hydro. We have contracts with landfill gas over in, over by Des Moines. And so we're, and we are, um, um, actually, one of the exhibit D items, I believe, is South Central Hydro. Not solar, it was South Central Hydro, I mistake. Um, so we're going to get, um, anywhere from forty to maybe sixty megawatts of, um, hydro power out of South Central Nebraska or Central Nebraska.
Which is going to be important because, uh, you know, Colorado really implemented a very lofty goal uh, to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Twenty thirty's a throw, a throwaway. I mean, it's so close, you can feel it. Um, and so they've spoke, most of the communities that are a member of MEAN have spoken for or strongly asked for, and all of the hydro that is going to be generated or can be generated over between now and twenty fifty. Uh, so, so gaining any hydro is going to be extremely difficult in our, in our resource mix. Not, not doable, but extremely difficult without planning many, many decades in the future. And, and we anticipate, I anticipate, um, Nebraska and Iowa to follow suit, not with a strong, uh, but definitely, uh, follow MEAN's guideline with a twenty fifty uh, carbon neutral goal. Wyoming's the outlier there. I don't see how they can do it. I, I really don't. I mean, they're coal, that's coal country.
Yeah.
Uh, it would have to change drastically. I mean, that even if they converted every acre of land to solar a- and wind, they still couldn't produce what they produced with coal.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but twenty fifty is sort of the goal that MEAN has set for their carbon neutrality or to get to carbon neutral by twenty fifty or green by twenty fifty, which was, was a great plan. I mean, I, I think it's, it's doable. And we, we tailored our last integrated, integrated resource plan based on that, so.
Yeah. And so as the, as our cool contracts and, um, and gas contract, you know, the, the non-renewable contracts begin to drop off, then we'll be out looking for most likely renewable resources to continue to serve load. So that, when I was out the last time, we looked at that, that pie chart that showed how much was oil and water. So that'll be changing as, as time goes.
So what's the cheapest?
Hydro actually is cheapest. You always want to sign your WAPA contract.
Which we did. We're good. We have very low WAPA contract, but we're going to keep it.
Um, it is the cheapest. It, WAPA is Western Area Power Association and it's run by the federal government. Believe it or not.
Why?
Um, they own, uh, they own, they, the, the government has all of the federal dams that it's, that it produces, um, hydro power and, and sells to communities.
All through the Department of the Interior.
It's, you know. So the Bureau of Recreation and then the, uh, heart engineers, they all work together to keep those plants running and then they sell it. Every ten years, they go through a process. Um, they take a tiny little piece of everybody's, every current WAPA allocation, put it together and. and offer it up to new communities. So you always want to sign your WAPA allocation. MEAN has a pretty reasonable rate as well. Our energy rate is just under four dollars. Okay, forty dollars, I should bring this up, megawatts. So about forty dollars and seventy cents a megawatt hour. Sorry.
When you think about your home, you deal in kilowatt hours. So we're talking about a thousand kilowatts.
Right.
Which is a lot.
Yeah. And your highest is probably nuclear still. Because there are many nuclear plants built in decades. And the biggest issue, well, the two biggest issues are, is the permitting, which they are now finally letting up, the government is, it would take decades to get a permit. And so they, they're cutting a bunch of the red tape. And they're not putting out, and people, nobody knows how to run them because nobody, nobody's going to school to run them because there aren't any in the ones that, you know, until now, the ones that are running, you know.
We all knew what happened at Three Mile Islands. Nobody really wants to do that. But there was some legislation that was either presented, I don't think it was passed, about micropneuclear or?
The microgrids.
The microgrid nuclear project. So there's some, there's some interesting progress being made on that front that I think could help bring that down.
That is what's pushing those permitting faster. There are those. But nuclear is the highest right now. Solar and then wind. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Pretty information.
If you have any questions, Dr. Ili, Edward has my email address. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for being here.
Are you driving all the way back today?
Uh, no, we're gonna hit Southern Nebraska, going back.
Okay, good.
How is it? Maybe in the old days when I was young, I would beg to do that. Oh, yes, I would love to. So I'm also the coordinator for the annual conference that's held every March in Lincoln at the Marion, Orangeville area. This year, I have the speaker, Rulon Gardner, who is going to come. I don't know if any of you know who that is, I know ever does.
I got a picture with him on my phone.
Oh, I'm super jealous now.
Give me the headline.
So he is wanting to come and speak at our conference. He was the two thousand, two thousand gold, Olympic gold medal winner against the thirteen-year reigning Russian champion. And so he's got a really cool story and his, and his life since then is also really cool. So I'm excited to have him come. We're going to talk about a lot of water issues. We're going to talk about gas issues. We're going to talk about how gas globally impacts electricity. We're going to talk about, I'm going to have a gal come in. It's, you know, it's the same old, you know, Gen Z millennials, you know, that whole, the whole generational thing. She has a perspective on it that it's like, I was like, wow, now it all makes sense. And so that'll be, that'll be a really interesting take. So I would just invite you to come. It's, you are all welcome. You will all, well, at least Edward will give it. I try to send it to the elected officials as well. Because we try to have a breakfast for the elected officials and so our CEO usually heads up that, that session. So it would be great to see you guys. And that's in March, nineteen twenty. So it's an eve, it's a, it's the reception is on the nineteenth. It's already Wednesday on the twentieth and then the morning of the twenty-first.
I'll do it. I'll send, I don't want to see it. Get away from that.
It works in the, it works in the, in, like, Florida, the, the big stuff.
Oh, wow.
It works now. It was, I saw it in the operator.
Wow, what'd you say?
Two thousand, I think, gold medal.
I didn't say that. I presumed he's excited to know what that was, but I did not, did not know.
He's also a former Nebraska. And he may, and Carol Mayer may not have gotten one. I don't know.
I did.
Oh, okay, all right. There we, there's.
He's getting all the credit.
So I'll send out the detail when we've got to save the date. So, yeah, I think this should be a good, a good experience for everyone.
Maybe.
You showed me your picture, right?
Well, see, here's the thing, I, I, I'm probably the only person who's ever asked him this question. Because I didn't know who he was because he was in a mask, he's back in the corner. And I was working there one day as a locum. And I went there and I was just chatting with this guy, did ask those guys, these wrestling questions. And he came in after I was there, you know, I didn't even see him because he's all masked up. You know, I knew who he was. I said, do you wrestle? And he's like, oh, is he a wrestler? I was like, who'd you wrestle for? And everybody just stops like, America? Like, oh. Yeah, I asked him to wrestle.
Now you have opportunity to get a new picture.
Yeah, there you go. Put him in the headline picture. No, I said, you guys knocked out the top of my head off. Very nice.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
No, it was good.
All right.
I'll keep sending this to Ed every, every three weeks.
I'm gonna get my own picture. I'm worried. Gonna be him autographing my deck with a permanent mark.
Again, a way to take you on first, I guess.
I thought maybe that might be a good lead-in. You know, we've gone to the League of Nebraska Municipalities. Obviously, I think this might be a good, a good one to attend this. So she's, she's put quite a bit of effort into growing this annual conference year after year. And it's finally at a point where I think, I think that it would be worth, worth our while to attend.
Where is it at?
At the conference for the Marriott.
When's the dates?
The nineteenth and the twentieth, twenty-first. March.
But there was the evening of the nineteenth, right?
The event is in the nineteenth, yeah. And I'll send out the agenda and everything when, when they finalize it. So we can put it on the agenda and talk about it.
Perfect.
There would be an off week, so it'd be between our two.
Action and discussion on approval of proposed proposal for the city of Grant's SCADA system updates between the city of Grant and Atlas Automation, Inc.
Okay, so I appreciate you guys reviewing the bids. I've submitted, we did receive threes. We received four. One of them was actually outside of the timeframe required. Atlas Automation was a low bid and you awarded that bid at the last meeting. They submitted their proposal for your approval. This is not part of the bills and claims. They will not be built out until the services are complete. The description is what you are approving here. No authorization for the mayor to sign this, please do the amount.
Isn't this the same one we made a motion and passed last time?
You approved a bid from Atlas Automation. This is a proposal of services from Atlas Automation.
So what do we, what do we, what are they doing for us?
They're going to update our SCADA system. The SCADA system controls the water tower, the three wells and the two sewer lift stations, bringing us into the twenty-first century. Currently, we're operating, I think, Windows ninety-three. For this, and this will bring us, bring us up to speed to where we need to be. No one is, uh, free state communication is no longer servicing the lookout software that you currently use.
Is it all going to be electrical or is there any, any manual backup to this?
Actually, this is, there's, all of it's battery backup. There's, there's no fail-safe, I guess you would say, but all of the wells can be operated by hands or started and stopped by hands still. If that's, I think that's where you're going with that.
Yes.
Everything can still be started and stopped manually at the well itself. But there is also battery backup built into each of the systems.
So I move to approve the proposal for the city of Grant S C A D A, the Water Tower Wells and Sewer Management Software Hardware System update between the city of Grant and Atlas Automation, Inc. and operates the mayor design. And we moved here to be second. So we accept the proposal. The mayor to sign and that was fifty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Any questions or discussion?
That amount may change if there's any change orders, but that's the contract.
And tax. That includes?
That doesn't include that.
No, not including tax. Okay, excluding tax. Okay. Any discussion? Andrew, how do you?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Action and discussion on Revolution twenty-three dash ten zero one, a resolution of the mayor and the city and the council of the city of Grant rescinding prior resolution twenty-three oh seven ten the nuisance property at nine forty-nine Furman Avenue.
So West Central did not need to be present for this or any picture or anything. They, they cleared this property and asked me to rescind the declaration of nuisance on this at this time. There's been one posting, one five-day posting for abatement and obviously on the last meeting, or second to last meeting, sorry, they did all of the, the abavements prior to that. So that's their update at this time. I didn't feel like it was necessary for them to drive for.
Did the property owner clear this?
It was cleared by the property owner, yes, perfect.
And said, action on resolution number twenty-three dash ten dash oh one to rescind the prior resolution number twenty-three oh seven ten, declaration of nuisance property, nine forty-nine Sherman Avenue.
Same.
Turney move, Sam second, that we accept resolution twenty-three ten dash zero one, rescinding prior resolution twenty-three oh seven ten. Any discussion? Sam, how do you go?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carried. This next one, it came about because of, we needed to add verbiage to include state statute. No, I said that totally backwards.
No, you're good. You're good. I mean, it all stemmed from, from a state regulator.
Oh, state regulatory, okay.
So Jesse was notified by, by the Nebraska Department of Agriculture that we, we had some requirements based on some legislature that was passed pursuant to the Nebraska Pure Food Act. Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-one dash two, comma, two thirty-nine to eighty-one dash two, comma, two ninety-two. This is Nebraska Pure Food Act, which outlined that the purpose of the registry is to record in a central location the municipal ordinances used to regulate mobile food establishments. We, we did not have any language in our current ordinance regulating mobile food establishment. And again, I expect a full three readings out of this. As we've done in the past, I don't, I don't need this pushed. The Nebraska Department of Agriculture does not need this pushed through.
Right. It was by the end of December, so we.
The end of December.
So some of the things that it outlines is, is each city of the third or second class again, consenting village N G A now shall participate in the registry by providing the department certain information, a sample copy from any form that is required to be submitted in order to, in order for the mobile food establishment to operate in the city. A complete electronic record of the ordinances used to regulate mobile food establishments. Hence, us need to create language in our ordinance and city code, sorry, in the city code via ordinance for mobile food establishments.
We have a permit, you guys have approved the permit. It was just making the food trucks portion more black and white. Because it's been confusing because they're on private property, we're requiring. And then if they are on public property, we need that.
What would we charge them for? Ten dollars a year, five dollars for each thing.
Perfect. I don't want to participate. I was saying, I would discourage it, let's come here, you know?
We have the lowest food, food truck permits in the state.
Outstanding. That's what I like here.
I like it too. Anytime we can get something new, I'm happy.
This is by no means for, this is, this is not prohibitive or restrictive to any food trucks. This, this does nothing but other than black and white what we already tell them face to face. They, they have to face the sidewalk. They cannot face the street if they're on public property. If they're on private property, it has to be completely contained within a private property in order for them to not have a food permit or solicitor's peddler's permit. If they wish to be on public property, i.e. the turnaround is a perfect example, then they do need to come in and get a permit and provide the necessary food safe and so on, and so on and so forth. It's outlined on the permit that you've already heard.
So the facing this, they can't face the street, is that state statute also? Or is that just something that we're just doing?
That's safety.
It's, as long as they're, as long as they're right of way, they don't repeat the right of way. I mean, can, could you be on some public property and still face the street?
Yeah, as long as they don't impede the right of way, they can, and it's in there.
Yeah, I saw that, but I thought.
As long as they don't impede the right of way, they can face.
So on C, it looks like they can't. That's not, that's what, it looks like the venue service side, I'm sure, must be facing private property. I said that I see the right of way stuff later, but I know, I mean, I understand we don't want people to just gather in the sidewalk. We don't want to create a car accident kind of stuff. But I mean, I've seen other, other towns where like, it's like parked next to the building and it actually does face the street, but it's sort of a long walkway up to it. You know what I mean? And so I, I, my concern here is, is that little piece right there, I just think that it's not necessary if we just put, they can't impede the, the right of way on the sidewalk or the roadway.
So, so again, that, specifically drawing to section C there, food trucks are authorized to operate without a permit. That's the language that's necessary in there on private property, so long as the truck and all equipment are completely contained on private property.
I know, I see that, but at the very last sentence, it says they still have to face the private property.
Okay, so you want, so long as it does not impede the right.
Yeah, because I mean, you could drive by a road and it's like, you know, I, I'm thinking, so I'm thinking like, you know, I mean, we had, when we have, I mean, you, you're on downtown, that's about right, it's a solo salvage, right? You can put your, you can put your food truck back, you know, twenty feet, but you were saying you can't face the road. I just, I just.
I got it. So, so you would just strike facing a private property and change the food truck must not impede the right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, you know, it's just a bit easier in this.
Because you had the.
I always prefer state law. I mean, I understand like, we're trying to make this all work. You know, I understand the same. I totally get that. We can't impede the right of way. Yeah.
With the highway, we can't have anybody out in the highway.
But you can't have anybody in the main road. I can have somebody sitting, you know?
There's verbiage then so that it's not, your vehicle has to be parked them backwards or things like that.
So I, I get that. I get that. Yeah. We can't have people just clogging the sidewalk either, so, you know.
Perfect. All right. Jesse, you want to do the first reading for us?
Ordinance number twenty-three dash ten dash zero one and ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska, admitting section five dash two zero one, registration issuance of permit of Article Two Peddlers and Solicitors of Chapter Five Business Regulations of the City of Grant, revised municipal code, adding language concerning food trucks and providing when this ordinance is in full force and effect.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So I'm arranging it in C, but it's also mandated D two. We just changed it.
I like the language in D better, not impede normal sidewalk traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, A. Action and discussion on ordinance twenty-three ten oh two and ordinance of city of Grant authorizing the public county treasurers to collect special asset money to repel, you know what, I'll just let Jesse do it.
Ordinance number twenty-three dash ten dash zero two and ordinance of the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska, authorizing the Perkins County treasurers to collect special investments to repeal all other ordinances and resolutions for parts thereof in conflict to provide that provisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of Grant and to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect. To repeal all other ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof in conflict. To provide that divisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of Grant. And to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Not been paid for, so that's why I made it for special.
I mean, we're, I was asking earlier, there's no way to do this with a resolution, you have to do an ordinance every single time. And what is, what's the risk of this person selling us and not, you know, I mean, is there any risk of that?
There is. But the chances, unless it's a private sale, I mean, anytime that. Yeah, I mean, there's always that risk, but if it's a private sale that happens, then yeah, I mean, what can I?
So we're not, we're not giving out a whole lot if that were to happen. So I guess the question is, is do we make it like, if it's a certain. I understand, I like the, like, the three, I like to stick with the three readings. I don't wanna say that after that. But is there something you wanna consider where if it gets to a certain dollar amount and we're worried about the loss that we're getting taxpayers how to pay? Do we then say, because it's this high, you don't get the three readings? You know what I mean? You're not paying it? Is that, I mean, you know what I mean? It's just like, if there's that kind of risk where they're gonna, they're just gonna skip the bill?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we want to put anything in. In wording as to like a, the year because of mine change too, based on. Circumstances or things like that. But I mean, that's your basis discretion whether or not.
Sure.
So, so we could waive the, the three reads on this one. If we felt that they were.
That's always an option.
Yeah.
If we were to lose out on that, we wouldn't lose out, like, consecutive, you know, it's a huge thing.
I mean, internally, you could set that threshold. We don't, we don't, we don't need to incorporate that into.
Right, I was, and I wonder if that was a discussion, if you were gonna discuss that, it'd be an executive session kind of thing, you know what I mean? And uh.
And these were less than the last ones that you guys did do, and. We did go with the three readings, because we looked back to see what we had done in the last one, or. One, or the other ones that we did in that quadrant.
Did he call and ask him if we were gonna do the three readings?
No communication.
And they received a certified letter um that had how many, cause you have, we have a certain amount of days that they have to. Before we follow through the process, and I sent a second reminder notice also, so.
And they've signed for them and.
They had signed for the first one, we did a certified and regular US mail, and then there's a second one, we just sent US mail. And that is not required, that was just a courtesy.
So, so to you guys, if you wanted to waive the readings or?
Well, I think there's some legality questions, I think I wanna, and not very many, but some that I think that, that the city, I might wanna ask, things I give session. So that's what I, I wanna, I would, I would post it, I would, you know, make a motion that we go into this executive session to ask them. Legal questions on his ordinance, um on these ordinances uh at eight fifteen. Yeah, regarding potential lawsuits, and to include the council and everyone that is currently in there. The attorney, the city lawyer, the city, city.
And I have a motion by Sam to go into executive session at eight fifteen and put everyone in the room, a second. Turney wait, second. Right, in, in reference to, well, yeah, okay, um any more discussion? Andrea, how do you go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Turney?
Yeah.
Motion carry, we are in executive session at eight fifteen. Then. I'm out of executive session at eight twenty-four. Any discussion? Sam, yes, motion carry, we are out of executive session.
Go on A and it has, or sorry. You're on E and it hasn't been written, it's time to record.
Yes. And so we'll move on to F, would you please read that, Jesse?
Twenty, ordinance number twenty-three dash ten dash zero three. An ordinance of the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. Authorizing the Perkins County Treasurer to collect special assessment. To repeal all other ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof in conflict. And provide that divisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of Grant. And to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Thank you. Yeah, that was the first reading. Also, would you please read ordinance twenty-three ten oh one?
Ordinance number twenty-three dash ten dash zero four. An ordinance of the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska. Authorizing the Perkins County Treasurer to collect special assessment. To repeal all other ordinances and resolutions or parts thereof in conflict. Provide that divisions of this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of Grant. And to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and.
Thank you very much, Jesse. Alright, we know that. Bills and claims, are they going to be in the Civil Department? I move we accept those claims in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight twenty-nine fifty. Get removed, Sam second, that we accept bills and claims, amount a hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Any discussion? Andrea, how do you go?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Motion carry, and we are adjourned at eight twenty-six. Been a very much fine soul, we're not the policy, and they're doing their presentation, I've never had this.